... Notice that the meeting was filed on Thursday, 3rd, and was to be held on the 7th of December, 2012. Full notification that this meeting is being resumed to the open public meeting tax at least forty-eight hours prior to this meeting. Roll call.
Mr. Vida?
Yes.
Mr. Breakfield?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Arndel?
Here.
Mr. Raff?
Here.
Mr. Samuel Vino?
Yes.
Mr. Julius?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Here.
Do the rise of the people's flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, have you included any?
Actually, the address is located in the vouchers. Old Business American Properties of Milltown. Land here company will not be heard tonight. It's scheduled to be December fourteenth. And the new business, Scott Rattling, will not be heard until Thursday, January twenty-fourth. That's exactly our next session.
Okay, uh... Let me confirm. Uh, approval of the minutes for September third, two thousand thirteen. Motion. So moved. Second. All favor. Aye. So moved. Uh, approval of the resolution.
Two thousand twelve oh six, four dollars, and four quarters of time.
So moved. Second. Uh...
Mr. Breakfield?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Arndel?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Two thousand twelve oh eight, eight years old, so it's supposed to be a seven-year term, if I'm not mistaken.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Breakfield?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Arndel?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
This is an open public meeting. Is there anything not on the agenda of the public, as I would like to see? There is nothing else? To... Chairman Valtteri, is there a motion?
Um, they've motioned to approve the table of address dated October second, twenty thirteen, for a total of twelve thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-six cents.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. So... Okay. This is to Old Business, page twelve, two oh seven, American Properties. As everybody has already said, uh, Mr. Kokko is the Gazarovski. We're gonna go two hours on this night, which is gonna go until we're back in whatever the last meeting, but then we can go to the next session. Okay.
Just so... I went back a little bit my notes. Debbie went through the transfers that we have. And just so we're all clear on the record as to where we are, Mr. Kokko was in the middle of his course examination of Mr. Gazarovski, so I would imagine that continued. And on that, then Gazarovski has the right to cross-examine Mr. Phillips, your planner, and also Mr. Trautman, your traffic. That's what... I think that's where we're at. But would you like to... Everybody have any better opinion on it?
I agree.
What's your point?
No, no, we're about the public. The public? Public has had a chance to force them all over the roof so far. And it's always been a condition of further proofs that when you go back to public on the roof. That's correct.
Okay. All set. So we're closing your course. The call is called back.
And Mr. Kokko, as you're coming up, you were sworn last on yourself, or... Sorry.
Just wanted to confirm from the board at our next meeting, I will have a marvelous mic for tonight, just to make sure that we have all of everything on mic.
Okay. Uh, we're all set. Mr. Kokko, uh, there was in fact a transcript relative to the last hearing. I've taken a brief look at it. And if you recall, at the last hearing, I spent some time with you discussing various And I think I probably spent perhaps ten minutes on what was happening to you. But during this evening, I'm going to attempt not to cover anything I previously covered. aspects of that plan. Some of it had to do with Route thirty-five, Cherry Tree Farm Road, as well as the revised Uh, if I do, it will be inadvertent and perhaps just to refresh the board as to where we real-life Taylor Lane. are. Uh, just so, uh, let me go and just clarify with regard to this, the previous configuration I believe that last meeting was on August seventh, which is approximately two months of this property reflected a roadway, uh, which I'd refer to as a private roadway known ago, so some of the board members, perhaps, uh, need a little bit of refreshment. as Taylor Lane, that was located to the west of the real line roadway, correct?
Yes.
And, uh, I understand that we're gonna have to share this mic.
No, no, you can share the mic.
We can't say you're...
All right, thank you. Will be of assistance. Thank you, Joyce.
Okay. Uh... Are you ready to say that?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and when you shared the statement, did not, that in its previous location, if one were traveling in a southerly direction on Route thirty-five, one would be able to ingress only Taylor Lane by, uh, steering to the right, entering into the ramp, and then getting onto Taylor Lane, correct?
Correct.
Right. But now, with this new configuration, uh, if in fact one were on Cherry Tree Farm Road and proceeding in a southerly direction, whereas previously, one would have to make a right and then go up thirty-five, get to a junkyard, and come back down, now one will be able to simply, if traveling on Cherry Tree Farm Road, proceed in a southerly direction and cross directly over Route thirty-five onto the real line Taylor Lane.
Correct.
And similarly, with regard to traffic coming from the north, uh, one would be enabled to make a left-hand turn onto Taylor Lane over Route thirty-five, correct?
I don't think so.
It's gotta go down to the junkyard and then come back?
No, I think you said traffic coming from the north.
Traffic coming from the south, I meant the south.
From the south, they'd go through the junkyard, as they do today.
Right.
Or could go through today and cross Route thirty-five to Taylor.
So basically, with regard to the real line Taylor Lane, uh, there'll be three means of ingressing onto this property in a more direct road that was previously allowed or afforded.
There would be... Yes, that's correct. There would be movement related from Cherry Tree Farm Road, southbound, and from Route thirty-five, northbound through the junkyard, that could now enter Taylor Lane through this source.
And I think, as a matter of fact, the master plan, I mentioned specific recommendation that that be done, uh, did it not?
That's correct.
And I think the test point was, is that when we last left off, uh, you were unfamiliar with the classification of Cherry Tree Farm Road as to whether it was a local road, a collector road, or an arterial road. And I believe we referred to the master plan, and they identified it as being an arterial road.
I believe you said that. I disagree. I didn't. As far as how to determine, I don't know how to determine any of these.
Okay. Let me ask you this question.
Just a quick objection. There's nothing in the record that determines that the master plan, uh, sets forth that road as an arterial road.
Of course, examination. I asked them, I showed them the master plan on that day. I asked them about it. He responded to it. When I put on my red tape, so we'll introduce that testimony, and that'll be it.
Fine.
Of course, examination. Mr. Gorilla, about your...
He said fine.
What?
He said fine.
Okay, fine. Now, since the last time that you were here, did you have occasion to review any of the plans or the surveys or the maps which I was examining you with regard to at our last hearing?
No.
Now, at the last hearing, I think you indicated that there were certain documents, uh, that you had not seen, and yet it feel unnecessary to, in preparation for this evening's meeting, to go back and seek out and find additional documentation, surveys, or maps.
I believe you showed me the recorded file map toward the subdivision next door, which establishes the boundary of the... of that property, and I didn't take idea of that sort of thing.
Okay. You recall, at the last hearing, uh, there was a question raised by me as to whether or not as part of your initial application, you had submitted a outbound survey of the subject property?
Yes.
And I believe your test point was that, uh, number one, your firm did not perform an outbound survey. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And I think you further stated that while the outbound survey in question was not a part of the original documentation submitted by your office to the board secretary, that it was in fact submitted to, I believe, the board engineer at some time prior to the first hearing.
Yes, I believe my recollection is, is that the... There's a requirement that a copy of the sealed survey be submitted with that information, I believe it was.
Okay. You decided, obviously, that he has his non-...
Closer clock ladder.
Okay. Or perhaps this party used this microphone in some way?
Well, we should call it, call it, please. Because I don't care.
About the one right there. Yeah, it could reach. Or would you prefer it closer? Yeah, and it would run maybe from that one. Either way, it's off, or...
Perfect.
Now, you can stand up.
It's like...
It's like...
Is that... Is it a big member for you?
Let's see.
Did you hear any?
Now, subsequent to that hearing, I made an open request to the board, and this bureau regarded it with a survey that was prepared by the OMLF, O-M-L-A-F-D Engineering Associates. It's referred to as a boundary and topographic survey of tax lot fourteen, lot fifty-one, of Home Delegate, as well as tax lots thirty-four, thirty-five point oh one, thirty-five point oh two, lot six hundred of the tax from Milltown. Yes, you take a quick look at that and confirm whether or not, and it's your understanding that that is the map that your firm submitted, I would represent to you, did come from the board secretary?
Yes, that's the survey that we used as the background, backdrop for the project.
Okay, fine.
And I'd like to suggest, let's independently mark that then as oh three.
Sure. Mr. Kokko, I know we touched on this briefly, but my understanding that utilization of a survey performed by another company is in fact permitted, but there must be a certification filed by you saying that you examined the survey, you looked at the data, and you're convinced that the survey as reflected is accurate.
I don't know where you got that from. We referenced that survey by notation of our work, we'll certify it.
Okay. But you made no independent determination by your company to see whether or not this was in fact an accurate survey?
No.
Okay. So at this one time, you don't know if it's accurate or not?
I assume it's accurate, prepared by a professional answer, very certifiable, and qualified, and, uh, not important, and there's a reason to not believe it's accurate.
But no reason, no reason other than that to believe that it is accurate?
Okay.
Now, let me ask you this. In addition to looking at the, uh, survey itself, and by the way, prior to coming here this evening, because you personally have an opportunity to examine the survey.
Yes.
Uh, you recall that during a part of this hearing, there was a great deal of discussion as to whether or not, uh, the existing Taylor Lane was a public or a private roadway, you recall?
Yes.
That exchange. Have you ever made a determination or attempted to determine whether or not it is a public and/or a private roadway?
I have an opinion on it. I don't know that, uh... I believe, I believe that it's certainly, it's acted like a public right of way, and it's treated as a public right of way, and, uh, it, it certainly walks and talks on it. So I believe it is a public.
I understand that. Now, having said that, on your plan, not this survey, but on your plan that you submitted to the board, did you know it to be a public and/or a private right of way?
I don't really pull exactly what we pulled. You probably pulled it a right.
It's like, what does your mind have to give you?
You want to start with a look?
Sure. Let's look.
Here, read that, Mr. Kokko. I'll... Let me read that. Uh, looking at the existing conditions, critical areas planned, which you pursued as heat and the set, and it indicates just Taylor Lane with various... I don't specifically pull it up. We just show the property, it's identified on the...
Now, let me ask you this question. If you have knowledge that it being capitalized as a private right of way as the person who submitted these plans to this board, would you have the obligation to disclose that?
Um, I, I believe we would noted it, but it would... We're referring again to the survey, so that's what is shown on the survey, so I don't really have an obligation to report it.
Okay, now we'll report on the survey. With regard to the old land plan, can we take a look at Taylor Lane and tell me whether or not he designated it as a private or a public right of way?
They have it designated as... They show edge of pavement and travel ways. They have notations that are shown on the state general property parcel maps, and in other areas, they identify it as middle of the lane. They have certain heat references. So it's referenced in several different...
But they don't identify it as either a public or a private right of way, do they?
They identify it as a public right of way for the southerly portion of it through the site and going further south, but not through the middle of the site.
Okay. Now, while there are also notations on that map, and on the jury retention specifically to references one, two, three, and four, which are part of the old land survey, did you ever, in preparation for this application, uh, secure copies of those references that he refers to to determine whether or not they reflect Taylor Lane as being either a public or a private right of way?
We did acquire the general, the state highway department or DOT general property parcel maps, uh, because of the work we were doing with Route thirty-five, we did not acquire copies of the usual file maps.
They asked, why did you not?
There was no need to. It was referenced on the survey. I assumed that that survey or review that had...
Okay, we'll come up with this survey. Now, during a portion of this hearing, I believe there was a reference made to a map of property known as Taylor Estates. I thought it had been marked as an exhibit. Do you recall this?
My notes reflected it as oh two. I don't know if it's shown on there, but...
Okay. I'll just... I can hit this up in the corner.
Oh two.
I'll put it on.
Which is the... Map, map of Taylor Estates was oh two.
Okay. Now, this is a map that old land refers to. It has it as a reference. And it is in fact a file map, and it's reflected as being filed in case twenty zero X one one, September the seventeenth of nineteen eighty-two. I would like you to take a look at that and tell me if you're looking at the northerly portion of Taylor Lane. Now, I think you testified that, uh, on the old land plan, or on your plan as well, the southerly portion of Taylor Lane is identified as being a public right of way, but you did not identify the northern portion. If you would, take a look at the map that you prepared by when you called, and see whether or not they identify that as being a public or private right of way.
They indicated a private road. Okay. Now, excuse me, I also, this is also a survey, and I also point out that their, the area that they're referring to is beyond the area that they're surveying and file map is being recorded for. The purpose of the file map is to outline the boundary of the property being southerly and to show the detail of the label within there. On either side, it's a notation, it's interesting, but it's not part of what that survey, I believe, would be certified. But it's, nonetheless, it says private road.
This is the file map, correct? Uh, file map shows that this particular engineering firm, Frederick Muller, identified the roadway known as Taylor Lane to the north as being a private roadway.
Correct.
Okay. Now, to your knowledge, is there any document, whether it be an imported deed and/or a map, which refers to Taylor Lane and it's being anything other than a private roadway?
It's referred to in the deeds of the property that my client is developing. Um, it's in a couple of the deeds that lines are described, it's beginning points of the lines are being described along the right of way of, or the sideline of Taylor Lane. It doesn't specifically say whether it's private or public, but in the absence of it saying it's private, I, it could be also public. So it's generally referred to in the deeds that I reviewed, um, that the beginning points of the lines are being described along the sideline of Taylor Lane or right, the sideline of, or the right of way line, I mean, right of way line of Taylor Lane.
Do you hear that? That document, as you're aware of, when it's recorded, unrecorded in the deed referred to, uh, in the master plan or any other place that refers to Taylor Lane as a public right of way, is a public road?
Other than seeing it on the tax maps and on the road, on road maps and the like, and also the, the fact that there is a roadway there that public travels on, and also power on, other than that, I have no knowledge of the imported deed or conveyance to make it a public right of way.
Well, for many years, Taylor Lane was in fact a unpaid street, was in fact.
I don't know.
Okay. Now, in the reference to, uh, the old land map, he also refers to a map entitled, Sugar Estates, as well as a map entitled Elwood Park. Did you have occasion to review either of those two maps?
Well, any data I do.
Good. It also refers to, uh, there's some references to deeds, either in these maps or in the documents. Did you have occasion to do that?
I have reviewed some deeds. I don't know that I could review all the deeds that were referenced.
Good. Now, in those deeds, state a stat of certain rights, which property owners off of the subject property had the inalienable right to utilize as deeds that going through Taylor Lane, did they not?
I did read it.
What?
I did not read those deeds. I don't know.
Oh, you didn't read it?
I didn't read the deeds to be fair.
What did you read?
I read it. I read it, uh, there's, where the existing tract that we're developing is lined into five tracts of land. It's the last reported deed for this property, the property that we're looking for and developing.
Were these deeds that you reviewed, were they the intra-company deeds that were established between the present owners of the property and the corporate entities between themselves?
I don't... I don't know. I don't think I... I wasn't really looking at the whole issue.
Did you read any deeds which were conveyed to property owners off-site?
No.
Now, did you review the deeds, did you review a type of policy that were misdepositioned with regards to this property?
No.
Okay. Now, uh, would it be fair to say that in reading these documents, particularly the map of Taylor Estates, which is specifically referred to, they would have alerted you to the fact that there was a question with regard to whether or not Taylor Lane was a public and/or a private roadway?
Who would have alerted us?
Those documents.
Your side?
Well, for example, the Taylor Estates, uh, map.
I'm not that I didn't look at it.
You didn't? Oh, you did not, Kevin?
I did say, I did, 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 I did.
So your test point is that with regard to the survey, when you looked at this survey, you did not look at the, or your father referred to file maps?
I did, yeah, I did, 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 I did. I reviewed the general property parcel maps. I also reviewed the most critical deed, uh, and the reason I'm looking at that is for bearing maps from the DOT, uh, right.
Let me ask you this question. If in fact you were aware of the fact that this was a private roadway, uh, was you in fact the obligation to disclose that to the board?
I, if I know for sure, that I would identify it as shown on whatever document that showed.
You're saying that you had known for sure, and you're telling me now that you're unsure as to what it was from the file application?
I think the area that, again, we're looking at a point, we're looking at a number of documents, starting with the tax map, that shows Taylor Lane has existed. Uh, we looked at the master plan, it shows it to be real line, and it seemed to be, seemed to us to walk this off as a public right of way.
And walk with the dog across the market. But the reverse is also true, isn't it?
I mean, the reverse is so unusual, that if you know it's not, shoot you one second.
Mr. Kokko, let me, let me show you the map, which we'll mark as, is it old for Mr. Gorilla?
Yes.
Old for?
Yes.
This again, is a document which I secured from this bureau. Uh, it's entitled Heritage of Milltown Overall Plan. Uh, the date of issue is June fifteen comma two thousand and twelve, which we got since September nine, two thousand and thirteen. And it's identified as having been prepared by, uh, Menel Engineering Associates, which of course, I mean, this north company is a back. Now, uh, were either one who was directly responsible for the overall preparation of this project and this map?
Yes.
And I take it...
In terms of the work in my office, yes.
And I take it that when one does that, uh, one of the things that you, of course, referred to is the existing land use development ordinances of the tax in Milltown, that not be southerly. So...
But the reverse is also true, is it not?
The reverse is so unusual that if you know it's not, shoot you one second.
Mr. Toma, let me, let me show you the map which Lamar has. Is it old or is it borrowed?
Yes.
It's entitled Heritage of Middletown Overall Plan. The date of issue is June 15, comma, 2012, which we've got since September 9, 2013. And it's identified as having been prepared by metal engineering societies, which of course are mainly these North Company's back. Now, were either one who was directly responsible for the overall preparation of this project and this map?
Yes. In terms of work in my office, yes.
And I take it that when one does that, one of the things that you of course referred to is the existing land use development ordinances, the tax and middle, that not the south.
Yes.
And you also identify the zone in which this property is located.
Correct.
And this property is located, I think it's called the ORF3 zone, and all of the standards and conditions of that zone would be applicable to you in regards to preparing the map.
Yes.
That is established as you've shown in the graph, the setbacks, a lot of area, the things that I sort of tell you how many acres you must have, what the units are per acre and the like.
Correct.
Now, in looking at this map, and I want to draw your attention specifically to Cherry Tree Farm Road. And it comes across, and I think it testified, that in the area between the ramp and Route 35, the width of that roadway was, I believe, approximately 9 feet. Is that what you said?
Someone would go, I don't remember.
Eighty-five, ninety. Yes, I'm ready, eighty-five, ninety. And then, of course, it narrows down. Now, it appears that it adopts kind of a uniform width, right out about the area of the first units which are located there with that width. A fair statement?
Yeah, but, yes, there's taper, the pavement is tapering through that area.
Now, if you can tell me, in that area of your right here, which I am pointing to, what is the width of the right-of-way and what is the width of the carpathian?
We, we explain. So, we know the record, we're never going to touch this. Are you talking about where it says on this, I'll look at the same thing, where it says realigned Taylor Lane?
I'm talking, I'm talking and referring to realigned Taylor Lane, and let's say, right in the area where the word light is.
The Taylor Lane right-of-way through the site is 50 foot wide, and it's 30 foot wide pavement. And then, as it approaches the ramp into 35, why exactly, how many dimensions?
But throughout, throughout the bulk of the lot, it's 50 foot right-of-way and a 30 foot pavement.
Correct.
Okay. Now, would you indicate, and I know you did this once before, but just for record, in your earlier plan, you referred to an alternative layout, but you referred to a chart of a roundabout. Where generally is that located?
We had come as a, in response to the board's comments, I'm going back to 83, we had proposed a...
Now, I can show you on this survey, this map.
I'm now back referring to the old...
The four.
The four. It's at the very end of the Taylor Lane right-of-way before it busts the joint property, the outpost that we were on the shore, and we proposed at the intersection to put in a roundabout, which is a traffic coming measure that, it's always like a small circle so the vehicles coming down, it shouldn't have to slow down, it's kind of through it, that makes it almost a cubicous route of the project.
Is that roundabout located within the property lines of the advocate, or is it located off-site?
Located on the front.
Okay. Now, when you talk in terms of having this roundabout, my understanding is, is that the purpose of a roundabout is that, is to prevent cars traveling at excessive rates of speed that when they get to the roundabout, they must necessarily slow down? Would that not be a fair statement?
What it's doing is by making, by having vehicles slow down, it makes it a less attractive route for our vehicles to use.
For some reason, that makes it not working.
Nothing happens.
He's not picking up you, so we're gonna have to play hands with the hive.
Oh, this one?
We're gonna stay here, well, I don't know where we can go.
We can do that.
May I suggest, as long as there's a corporate reporter, and although we want the best digital recording of this as, as possible, but the advocate seems to be providing a trace of their needed certified short-term reporter, so if, if we don't pick something up, the court, the corporate reporter should be getting it unless she's having difficulty, and in case there's indicates, we'll try to slow them down.
I can bear the point. There's been a little too loud.
Too loud.
I'm not the only one that's upset.
So, let's, let's do this. So, let's, let's, it's a difficult setting, referring her back to the corporate reporter, and some of it's a little loud, some of it's a little weak, some of it's whatever, so if the corporate reporters have some problems, just let us know, and we'll slow them down, and we'll try to make the best record possible.
What I thought about?
For the, for the public as well, the public as well, we're gonna have to share the content, as Cher said, so that everyone's, everyone in the audience can hear tonight, everyone wants to transfer it later.
Let me ask a couple of questions about the design of the site. And I want to refer specifically to, I take it that, looking at the site on the usually side of the site, you have ingresses and egresses into the site. Now, how many ingresses are there? There's two?
There's two on each side.
Okay. Now, once one egresses the site, we then come to a roadway that runs perpendicular to the ingresses.
Correct.
That which would be this over here.
The driveways that intersect Taylor Lane are perpendicular to.
You want to call the driveway a drive aisle?
Right.
Drive lane, fine. And then, going, going beyond that, there would be another, I take it, drive aisle, which is perpendicular to the roadway, that's located in, going in an eastward direction, which is this area over here, that would be between buildings 21 and 22. Correct?
I think so.
Okay. Now, generally speaking, there are similar traffic patterns on the opposite side, on the west-lee side, with drive aisles throughout the site.
Yes.
Now, on any of these drive aisles, do you reflect a cul-de-sac at the end of those drive aisles, or are they all dead ends?
There are some dead ends. There are not, there's actually two loop, there's a looped road, if you know, looped driveway on each side, east, on the, on the east and west side of Taylor Lane, and off of that looped driveway, there are several, what are called dead end or terminal parking.
Well, let's look, let's look at the northern side. Northern side of the property, it in fact dead ends into the area of the basement, does it not?
Yes.
You look at the eastward side, they in fact dead end into the, the open area or the transition area, do they not?
Well, there's, there's several areas where there's, the building ends, there's a driveway, there's a parking spot, and it's perpendicular to the circulation route.
On the perimeter of a property, other than perhaps some loops that you have in the interior of the property, but on the perimeter of the property, all drive aisles, dead end, do they not?
I don't.
Which one does it?
The one in the very northeast corner, the one that goes through this, I'm sorry, this area here, on the west side through the center, there's a dead end on the very southwestern side, there's a dead end on the northwestern side, and then the north and then the west.
Now, let's go into the layout itself. I take it that in establishing the setbacks for the Taylor Lane property, you in fact referred to the standards of the ORF zone.
Correct.
Would regard to all of those buildings which are abutting Taylor Lane, are any of them either facing or having their rears facing Taylor Lane, or would you identify all of these as being the side walls of the buildings in question?
The sides, for doctors, the sides of the buildings are abutting Taylor.
Okay. Now, I noticed that in all of these setbacks for those buildings above of Taylor Lane, they are basically between 25 and 27 feet as a setback. Just to make it more generic, they're between 25 and 32.
Yes.
They fit.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, when you prepare this plan, where do you get the information from to decide or determine what that front yard setback must be? In other words, what did you do to determine what the front yard setback would be on Taylor Lane? But before I answer that question, would you agree with me that regardless of whether it's the side or the length, all of those buildings which are facing Taylor Lane, the property between them and the roadway is in fact a front yard because they're facing a public travel road?
Yes, that was treated as a front yard setback.
Now, how did you determine that the front yard setback on Taylor Lane was 10 feet, as you refer to it, in your zoning guidance? Huh?
25 feet. Setback. Front yard setback is...
Says required 10 feet.
Required for any other public right-of-way or public road.
Now, tell me how you, as the person charged with drawing this plan, how you determined in your mind that the required setback on Taylor Lane was only 10 feet?
Well, Taylor Lane is not listed as a arterial or collector road, that I know. And in looking at the, even with the connection, of course, to Cherry Valley, I'm sorry, Cherry Farm Road, I don't, I believe, my opinion is that Taylor Lane on this side of Route 35 really services the neighborhoods within the community area. We, I, I don't think this, Taylor Lane acts as a collector road, since Taylor Lane basically is so much circuitous, and to get to anywhere else, you have to make lefts and rights, so it only acts as a collector, therefore we use the lower standard. But we did, we did use a 25-foot setback which deceived the building.
Well, would you agree with me that it would be impossible for the towns of the Middletown to categorize Taylor Lane where you've drawn it, because up until this map is approved and built, Taylor Lane, as you have realigned it, is not existent?
Well, it exists on the, in the metro.
Well, it is non-existent, is it not?
Not in this configuration, correct.
Yeah, it's not on a map, it's not drawn, it's not paved, it's not there, it's a non-existent proposed roadway.
Proposed roadway.
So, it would be impossible for this community to categorize or classify a roadway that had not yet been constructed?
I don't think that's true.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm built roadways are categorized all the time.
What?
Roadways are built all the time, they're categorized, priced in a key place.
Well, at this particular point in time, what this roadway is, would you agree with me, it is not categorized by any action of a government body?
In its existing condition?
Correct.
Seems so.
What?
Seems so, yeah.
It seems so? Why, why do you say it seems so?
It, it's, sir, to the information I have, it is not. I'm not aware of any information shows other than this.
Tell me, the document you referred to, the treatises you referred to, where you made the determination that this was a local road rather than a collector road?
We assume, based on the way the road operates, that it is considered a local.
I want to answer that question. Tell me that you took into consideration, any document, whether it be from a federal manual, whether it be from a state manual, or a county manual, which would have given you the information to allow you to make determination that this was a local road rather than a collector road?
In the residential site improvement standards, they call for 50-foot right-of-ways and 30-foot parkings, similar to everything that has been constructed south that exists today, and in fact seems to operate as a, as a local street, and this connection continues that.
How would you tell me, say that the residential site improvement standards have a specific reference to this unimproved portion of Taylor Lane?
They identify, they have a hierarchy of street systems in that, in this residential site improvement standards, and local streets are defined as...
No, I know what local streets are, how do you finish? All right, I'm sorry.
They define, they have a word, they have a definition of arterial collector roads, and based on that, I eventually checked my opinions, is that realigned Taylor Lane is not wise to people.
Now, would you show me in that residential site improvement standard manual, where you blamed the information necessary for you to make that determination?
I said that you don't have it.
You don't have it?
I don't share it with you.
Okay. Are there other documents as well that establish classifications of roadways?
I'm sure there aren't.
Did you consider any of those?
I...
Uh, one second. Before you made your determination, did you consult with or did you see a guide or a traffic consultant?
We worked with a traffic consultant.
Did you specifically ask him to give you his opinions to whether this was a collector road or a local road?
I have to stop. I believe we came up in conversations over this.
Is there a written letter or document from them to stop, to the authenticity of that comment?
Not, not that I can remember.
Now, let me show you, if I mark this as O5. This is also a document which I received from the towns of Middletown, and I would draw your attention to what I have reflected here with a pink sticky, the location of the subject property, and ask you whether or not you would agree with that.
Ron, did you just identify the document you referred to?
The document is identified as Middletown with parcels and aerial photograph, stated Tuesday from the 30th to 2013, that's who I'm referring to.
I have a question, Ron, sir. Can I, I have to go back a second, please. I would overlook to see, as you all pointed out, we're not picking you up without credit on the... So, it's, it's not, it's not even marginal, it's not even, so we have to do something better, we have to ask it back and forth, just so that it becomes the audience, and that we have some semblance of remark.
I think your question was, did your pink tape seem to represent the area, the location of the site, and I would agree with that, on the, when it appears to be aerial photograph.
Now, would you agree with me that going to the...
By the way, if one looks at this, one can see where the existing Cherry Tree Farm Road is located to the north.
Yes.
And it would also appear that there are literally hundreds of houses which are surrounding the Cherry Tree Farm Road on the west-lee side of Route 35.
Yes.
And it would also appear, would it not, that to the south of Route 35, again, immediately feeding off of Taylor Lane, there are at least between 50 to 100 houses?
Oh, that's a fair assumption.
Now, I, I think we all saw earlier, this earlier established, that we all acknowledge that Route 35 is a heavily trafficked state highway, it is in fact an arterial road.
Yes.
Would draw your attention to an area to be in south of the property, and ask you whether or not you can identify that as being a part of the crash systems of the towns of Middletown?
Part of the...
Crash system.
Uh, okay. Uh, okay, fine, so I'll take a look.
Would you agree with me that intertwined throughout all of these subdivided properties, there are a number of, uh, intertwining or circular or whatever you want to call them, specifically local streets which have brought residential homes?
I think what we're seeing in this area is a very typical single-family subdivision developments with fairly circuitous roadway systems that services the single-family lots in the area.
Would you agree with me that all of these subdivisions, specifically Taylor Estates, which is located over here, and located further to the southeast is either Sherwood or Elmwood, that all of those houses rely upon getting to Taylor Lane in order to get from their local streets out to the arterial road?
I disagree.
Okay, I disagree.
Well, there's, there's another route, there's Cherry Tree Farm Road, which is lies to the east of our site where cars can then enter and exit onto Route 35, which is a more directly direct Route 35 than Taylor.
Well, would you agree with me that the two which I'm referring to right here, which would be Taylor Estates as well as the west lane portion, I believe, is either Sherwood or Elmwood, that they have a direct connection into Taylor Lane?
I would agree that the single-family subdivision to our southwest, what is it? Taylor Estates, is that, Taylor Estates and a few of the homes further down have a, have a more, have a direct access on Taylor Lane.
So you've identified these homes right here?
No, I, I, as a few of those. A few of the homes that ended Taylor Lane at the intersection would have a very direct access to Taylor.
Okay, fine. And basically, Taylor Lane will serve to connect that residential, oddly, if you will, to the arterial roadway?
Correct.
Now, let me talk briefly about the test pits which you, you performed. And before I do that, this plan must comport with the stormwater management regulations of the state of New Jersey, must they not?
Yes.
Okay. And I apologize for not agreeing with you, a copy of a recent appellate court decision, but are you familiar with that decision which goes to the area of how one is to measure or design for stormwater management?
I believe, yes, I think. Yes, I do know, we were speaking of it, there's a recent decision.
Now, have you either redesigned or recalculated your figures in light of that most recent appellate court decision?
No, we received our D E P stormwater management permit several months ago and have complied with the rules in place as they were interpreted at that time. And now that those rules have been overturned, we have no intention of going back and changing our design.
Have you received a legal opinion from anyone, including the same, saying that basically you're saying your grandfather, but you have no knowledge as to whether you are or not?
I don't think so.
Well, I think as in your position, that whatever approvals you received prior to that appellate court decision, you're basically grandfather and don't have to comply with what the appellate judge now says on new rules?
Well, there's no new rules. What, what the court said was that the D E P had established a point system for rating or evaluating one part, partners, stormwater management system. We complied with those rules in that point system at the time. The court, I believe, said that the D E P had gone beyond their authority to establish a point system, so they've said that the, they shouldn't, the D E P shouldn't be using a point system. We wouldn't redesign our system because of that.
Now, uh, you know, I think your question is asked of you during your testimony with regard to the water tables existing on this property. Do you have a copy of that plan showing where you took your test forms, your test pits?
I don't have that with me, no.
You don't have it either?
Yes.
And they have it, be very with me for a second. Was, is it shown on the signpost?
No, I don't believe it is.
I'm sorry?
I don't, I don't, it's not, it should be shown there, I believe it's a separate plan that's included within a soil report.
Were, were the soil warnings done by your firm or were they done by another residential firm?
They were done by a geotechnical firm.
What?
They were done by a geotechnical firm, the soil is in here.
With a French parola?
I believe so.
Uh, would it be fair to say then that you really, you really are not, and I know you answered your question, but you really are not qualified to answer questions with regard to what they did?
Well, I can interpret your thing, though. I mean, as an engineer, we've, we're, as an engineer, I can look at the results of your testing, we did.
Okay.
Develop our, our stormwater management.
Now, were you present when those test pits or test forms were made?
No.
Uh, do you know, in this very function, on the work that was done, whether or not a representative and/or the funding board or the town engineering was present when those warnings took place?
I, I don't know that they were or not, and it would be unusual if they were.
I'm sorry?
It would be unusual if they were.
Doesn't the Middletown values development ordinance call for the fact that when such warnings are performed, a representative from the township engineers office must be present?
I believe that is for the design of a septic system. We don't have a septic system.
Okay. Now, with regard to the basins, can you tell me whether they are detention basins or retention basins?
These are retention basins.
Uh, retention, of course, means that, as I understand it anyway, that they're basically wet ponds, are they not?
Um, I'm sorry, I don't, let me just double check something.
Hit the top.
I beg your pardon, this is a detention system. It is your dry basis.
So, detention basin means that, as I understand it anyway, that, and I, and by the way, uh, uh, I understand the confusion sometimes between detention and retention and how, uh, I don't believe in this spoke, I just simply didn't, we had to refer to the map to make a clear testimony as to why it's there, so I don't interpret your initial comment yet this way. But in a retention basin, uh, it's the water is designed, the basin is designed to build water up to and include the mountain, a 100-year flood.
100-year storm, yes.
100-year storm. Uh, and that, the water will then rise to a certain level under that 100-year storm, and then gradually will percolate into the ground.
No.
Tell me about this.
It is gradually released through a small diameter opening in the outlet control structure.
So, in, in this particular, tell me at a 100-year storm, uh, well, before you do that, tell me if you will, how many basins are there on the site?
There are, excuse me. There are two detention basins, one on each side.
Could you show me the location of that, please?
Sure.
You can point it there.
Okay. I'm referring back to exhibit A3, there's one in the northwest corner of the site, and there's one at the northeast, northwest corner of the eastern parcel near the intersection of Route 35.
Let's, let's talk about the basin which is in the northwest corner of the site, which would appear to be the larger of the two basins, right?
Uh, rapidly, it is, it may not be larger.
Okay. Now, how much water does that mean sign of the whole? Does it know?
I don't know, I don't know.
Okay, fine. Now, tell me if you can, what the partial dimensions of that basin are with, length and width?
The length and width would be approximately, I'm just kidding. It's approximately, it varies, but it's approximately 130 feet wide, approximately 200 feet long.
135 or 200?
130, 200.
135. Now, uh, in its dried condition, what would be the depth of that basin at its deepest point?
Approximately 40 and a half feet.
Okay. And, uh, during a 100-year storm, I understand what you're saying, that I think of, on the interior of this basin, there is an orifice that where the water reaches a certain level, rather than overflow, is it going to this orifice as that proceeds to where?
To the stream or to where? Uh, it discharges to an existing pipe system within, it's gonna, I'm sorry, it discharges to a pipe system that will then discharge to an area to the northwest where the water currently flows and will go off-site.
Where, where does that pipe system go?
There is a pipe system that is along the northwesterly side of the site.
Is it on the subject's route or is it off-site?
Uh, part of it's off-site. There's actually a sanitary sewer line that runs along the property line where, just pointing at it. There's a, a sanitary sewer easement through this area and that pretty much is somewhat open and is swaled, we're asking for water.
How, so long is the pipe to which you're gonna connect?
That, the pipe, this, this charges to a swale, there was a pipe there, it's a sanitary sewer, we're not discharging it to the sanitary sewer, but the alignment of the sanitary sewer goes along our western boundary, it eventually discharges to a horse creek, which is a little bit northwest and off the cliff.
My question, is it issued going through swale and it's picked up by the pipe, whose property is that pipe located?
This property. My, the pipe that we're constructing is on our property.
The pipe that's connecting it to which property is that?
I think that's over there, there's two, you have to write it.
Now, with regard to the facility itself during a 100-year storm, what will the height of the water be in that northwest basin?
Approximately seven feet. I misspoke, for the 100-year elevation, the, the top, the deepest part of the basin goes from elevation 49 and a half, it's about six feet. I think I said five before, or 49 and a half, so it's closer to six feet. And the, from the invert is, where you said, it's about 2 feet, it's about 5.3 feet, so the water would be around 5 feet.
So, uh, during a 100-year storm, this basin surrounded by a community comprised of both adults and children, will contain water approximately 5 feet.
Basin during the 100-year storm will be approximately 5 feet.
Now, it depends, describe to me the perimeter of the basin, is this a 4:1 slope, 3:1 slope, is it a 1:1 wall or what is it?
These are 3:1 side slopes.
Funny?
Three, two, one, three, three feet horizontal and one foot vertical.
Okay. Uh, does that satisfy the standards of the Middletown land development plan, do they call for a 4:1 slope?
I, it's not been called, I believe we conform with all the regulations.
Just so we're clear, a 4:1 slope is an upward gradual slope, and a 3:1 slope is a...
That's correct.
It's a little...
No.
And I apologize for cutting you off. Is there any provision within this basin for where what begins the ascent to the 3:1 slope? Are there any shelves built into the basin for safety purposes so that a child, if they're inside the basin, can reach a slope or shelf before they have to climb up this 3:1 slope?
Typically, the shelves are installed in wet basins, or if we're gonna call it retention basin, but typically the shelves are put in those because they have water in them all the time.
Do your plans fall for a fence that you can start in around this basin?
That may have been a comment that was made by the engineer or planner, and I believe we agreed to install it, if I remember searching correctly. There's, we don't have one shown on the plan now. That's something that's usually up to the town to decide.
But it'd be fair to say that if you can in fact lower the maximum height of the water in this basin during a 100-year storm by simply expanding the size of the basin, in other words, if you increase the area of the basin, you automatically lower the maximum height of the build of, of the water during a 100-year storm?
That would be, that would be theoretically possible.
Yep. So, rather than water being at 5 feet 6 inches or 5 feet 2 inches, whatever they did, that it could be during a 100-year storm, no greater than a foot or two feet or three?
That's theoretically possible.
You chose not to do that.
Well, it's not practical, that's why.
Not practical? Well, not practical because you want a greater density of houses on this property rather than having a safer basin?
No, I, I, that's not the reason we did it. We did it because we used efficient use of the land. We're not, we have, again, the greater density issue is that we don't have, we're not near the permitted density that the ordinance permits below, I don't think we're overdeveloped.
Well, you're overdeveloped, right? Not in fashion density, they didn't consideration floodplating and the wetlands and everything else, like that.
The ordinance, the ordinance permits a much higher density than what we proposed.
I realize that the ordinance permits a much higher density, but it's physically impossible to get greater density on this property because of the physical constraints of the property itself.
I disagree, a different type of unit would, would, would ordinance are.
Now, uh, with regard to the test pits, and we don't have that with you because obviously the work was not done by you, and with the chairman, my only request would be is that we obviously are not gonna finish tonight, and I do wanna examine in regard to those pits because that goes into the issue of basins and or the like. I would request that the applicant make a decision to either produce French and Parola, or the engineers who did that work with you alternative, any earlier testimony of Mr. Coco in regard to the test pits we discover. Mr. Coco's relying upon test pits performed by professional engineers. If you wanna ask for those studies, reports, test pits, the data of French and Parola, I think, you can ask, but to have French and Parola come in and testify as to what's in those reports, I think that's, that's just too much. Maybe, but if you wanna, if you wanna, of course, examine Mr. Coco on those reports from French and Parola, I think that's fair game, but I don't think that could come into, comes to somebody with French Parola that's the man.
Okay.
Mr. Chris Coco, do you have with you the French and Parola reports?
Uh, no, I don't have. Uh, I, I don't know what you asked, though, that, uh, I, I wanna continue on with these tests and I'll certainly, no, you think I have it? Is this, Mr.?
No, we'd be happy.
I'm not, I'm sorry.
It's gonna be so efficient.
It's gonna be so efficient. Here's some answers. One for you. So, it was submitted as part of the application. What happened to you? In all fairness, Mr. Coco, you have to give him a few minutes, please. We've had five minutes for him to look that up.
We're gonna have a hint of why we're looking.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what's the purpose?
Uh, yeah, just saying those reports and what they should provide and what they need. I don't know whether he's capable or can examine with regard to that.
I mean, I think Mr. Coco, I'm not gonna go over to his mouth. He's gonna say he relied upon them. They're just like you rely on Mr. Becker.
Yeah, he relied upon their reports by a professional engineer certifying as to the subsurface conditions. And we can interpret what some of the, what these test pits show. The work of the soil engineer, read the report, look at the data, and use this information to develop the information that was submitted to the EDP in.
So, I think we could go around and around with Coco, but we're gonna wind up pretty much at that same.
I don't know about that. I moved on. I understand a couple of questions.
I didn't mean that to be for sure, but I understand.
No, I understand that. But I know that the board has been patiently working on this for a long time about raising these questions.
Are there serious dispute that the French and Perola report? I mean, is there an allegation that they're not right? And if so, you have the right to put on an expert to challenge the French and Perola. And if Mr. Coco is saying he relied upon that, and then you challenge it and the board in their finding determines that there were problems with the French and Perola report, then I guess, that would be wrong. Mr. Coco?
No, I think that's okay. I'm just reviewing it.
And I also intend to call the engineer to the test. I think you're free to do that, but... I mean, in an effort to reduce the back and forth, where are we going? So, if you're gonna cross-examine Mr. Coco on that, and he's gonna say essentially he relied upon it, and he's gonna have to do his own test pits. I mean, that's probably a given. That's what we're going here. Then, where do we go? What's the problem?
I understand a couple of questions. Mr. Coco, you've qualified yourself briefly before. Yeah, you know, the kind of reading it more about, you know what a test pit is, don't you?
Yes.
And you know that when you perform a test pit, you go, the test pit log, which blocks what one encounters when one dates the pit. Yes.
Do you know how many test pits were taken on the subsurface side?
The report looks like there were... Ten.
Now, do you know what time of the year they were taken?
They're dated. January of 2012.
Now, do you have an opinion as to whether or not when the water is cold and possibly the ground is frozen, that the test pit results are different than if the pits were dug nor in the summer?
Typically, the water table's higher when the winter lasts, so, and that's when... That's a more conservative way to do that.
What is the significance of when water is daily in test pit, that one encounters modeling?
Modeling is an indication that there may, that there was moisture at that elevation. What is unknown usually from a lot of, from the geotechnical engineers to when that might have occurred. So, they also look to see where the seasonal high groundwater typical is.
Now, with regard to the French and Perola report, did you tell me where they first encountered modeling?
And I refer you to the test pit log of the French and Perola report, which refers more specifically to the test pit TP-7 dated 1912. You indicate they hit dark models at 1.5 feet, and they also took a soil sample, too.
Now, when one finds modeling, it gets to 1.5 to 3 feet, that means at a certain point in time there was water at, there was groundwater at that level, was it not?
It could mean that, yes.
What?
It could mean that, yes.
Well, modeling is caused by groundwater, isn't it?
It is caused by surface water as well.
Now, do you know the number of test pits that were taken by French and Perola? Whether or not they consistently found modeling at between the areas of 1.3, 1.5 feet to 5.5 feet?
The modeling, see, the modeling varied at various depths. It was at four feet, two and a half feet, one and a half feet, five feet. So, it varied on each test pit.
Now, that would be, as I understand it, for test pits that were taken throughout the area where the units themselves were being constructed.
Some are.
Now, do you know whether or not those areas are used locally on the residential side where the test pits were taken and the modeling was found at 1 and 3 feet, that those units will contain basins?
Uh, no, there's no basins on this site.
What?
There are no basins.
At all, in any of them?
Um, I...
No.
There are none.
There are none?
There are none.
Is that not the reason why they're not, you go up to the water table?
I think it was a marketing decision.
What?
It may have been marketing decision.
But you have no powers, right?
No, we were not told, we were told there were no basins, so we...
I have a couple more questions. That'll be it. Now, Mr. Coco, I take it that in the course of your engineering practice, you have had occasion to design many communities such as this, whether they're about oral or acre striping or just simply Dallas projects, right?
Yes.
And you've constructed projects where as a part of amenities offered to the residents, there are various community services such as a swimming pool that this project has as well as a clubhouse which this project has. Yes. Would you agree with me that in reality, this project, because of the presence of Taylor Lane, the width of 30 feet, its proximity to Route 35, that you really hear that two separate residential areas?
I disagree.
You disagree?
Yeah.
Now, do you know what the speed limit's gonna be on Taylor Lane?
Assume it'll be 25 miles an hour.
What?
Twenty, I assume it'll be 25 miles an hour, maybe five.
And that for those people who are living on the westwardly portion, the southerly portion of the east, eastwardly portion of Taylor Lane, you get over, westwardly, you get over to the east. If there are children or there are mothers with young children, they would of course have to also travel down Taylor Lane.
They would have to cross Taylor Lane, yes.
I haven't really crossed it.
Now, my recollection was that the public crossed Mr. Coco. So that, it's not incremental. We don't go back into the public. They had their chance to cross examine, Mr. Gerasim had his chance to cross examine. And at this point, then, it's a redirection. Could it, but it doesn't have, like, if we don't want to speak. I believe we don't, plus the board, obviously, the board has that question. Just for housekeeping, if Mr. Coco can hand me back that, when marked, the French and Perola report is 06, just so we have an identifying, and if you finish, we have to ask, we could, we won't be... Let you. When marked that one is 06, we're gonna look, not be the file.
Thank you, Mr. Coco. Travis. Mr. Travis, your first name is Jay?
Yes.
Mr. Travis, you were previously sworn in, remain honorable.
Yes.
Mr. Travis, my name is Ryan. Yes, Ryan, I believe that moving forces is proceeding. I would say surrounding property owners who are objecting to this project, do you understand that, do you not?
Yes, I do.
And I think that you were retained by the applicant in this matter to provide traffic testimony.
That's correct.
When you present what I examined, Mr. Coco?
Take a quick timeout. This is a famous, Mr. Gerasim made that throws me off a little bit. Tell us just the basic fact, who's surrounding property owners do you represent?
I represent Mr. Brian Johnson, who is a surrounding property owner.
You just said that you represent...
I, I, I misspoke. I represent Mr. Johnson, my attorney, can I?
If you misspoke, that's fine.
Right. You know, people will speak time to time.
It happens.
I misspoke. Okay, now, where were you retained by the applicant to present testimony in regard to this project?
I was initially retained, I believe, in 2011.
Were you retained prior to the preparation of the site plan, which had been marked in evidence in this matter?
Yes.
Did you have input into the design of the internal roadways within this project?
I was in the discussions on it, yes.
Funny?
I was in discussions on it with the applicant as they...
Prior to the preparation of the map, did you submit any real reports to the, either the applicant or to his engineer?
No.
Other than your report which you prepared for the benefit of this board, have you prepared any other reports which were given only to your client or the client's engineer?
No.
Now, we have here located within those areas to the west and east of Taylor Lane, what would be commonly referred to as an interior layout of roads, do we not?
Yes.
Would you consider Taylor Lane as a procedure through this property as being an interior roadway or is it an exterior roadway?
Taylor Lane is a local roadway that provides access to...
I didn't ask you, I didn't ask you what kind it was.
Can I interrupt for a second, please? There's a little bit of stepping on each other's statements in general. And so, we've gotta try to be more careful about one ending and the next one beginning. Beyond that, if the witness has answered your question, the applicant will answer the question. So, we'll go back, and if you remember the question, let him finish his answer.
Yeah, my answer is that Taylor Lane is a local street that provides access to the internal roadways of this site plan, which I define as a multifamily access cul-de-sac.
What? But my question was whether you consider Taylor Lane to be an exterior roadway located adjacent to this project or would you deem it to be an interior roadway to the project itself?
I don't know how to answer that. I answered it the best I could. It's a local street that then provides access to a multifamily access cul-de-sac.
Okay, fine. Now, prior to your discussing the layout of the realigned Taylor Lane, did you perform any investigation or check any maps with regard to the existing Taylor Lane? That's the title street that it was?
I did not.
Now, let's talk about the realigned Taylor Lane. And you've referred to it in response to a question that it's a local road, correct?
Yes.
Now, generically speaking, all roadways located within the tabs of the Middletown are local, are they not? Local in nature?
I'm referring to how the ordinance defines, it's actually a local street as defined in the ordinance.
Okay, now, prior to coming here today, tell me what sources you reviewed in order to come up with the opinion that Taylor Lane was a local road as compared, I take it, to roads which are designated as collector roads and or arterial roads?
The ordinance.
Right, now, would you agree with me that Route 35 is an arterial road?
Well, there's two types of arterials, and Route 35 is what they define as, let me just double check, as a primary arterial. So, Route 35 is a primary arterial. There could also be in the master plan, in the ordinance, a secondary arterial.
Mr. Travis, just for the record, what are you referring to?
I'm referring to, I'm sorry, it's the master plan. I misspoke, obviously.
So, your designation within the master plan have a classification of roadways?
Yes.
That's what you're referring to. Is there a page number or something?
Yes, it begins on page 21. It's 21, 22, 23.
We're not gonna walk through the master plan, but it's basically part of the government law. Sorry.
Let's relax. You refer to Route 35 as a primary arterial road. How is a primary arterial road described? Is it described in the Middletown Land Management Service or master plan?
It is, yes.
How is it described?
I mean, you can read it for yourself. It's quite extensive. It's a major feeder road.
What?
It's a major feeder road.
So, that's from Route 35?
Yes.
The master plan also identifies the classification of that road as known as Cherry Tree Farm Road, does it not?
Cherry Tree Farm Road, yes.
And how does it identify Cherry Tree Farm Road?
Cherry Tree Farm Road is a secondary arterial.
What is the definition of a secondary arterial road?
They generally connect collectors with primary arterial roads.
Now, would it be fair to say that when we look at the earlier maps of Cherry Tree Farm Road, it is collecting cars from the various residential subdivisions located around it and delivering them to Route 35?
And or businesses?
What?
Subdivisions, businesses, whatever.
What? It's feeding into Route 35.
It connects to Route 35.
And now, as a result of this realignment, it's also gonna connect to the realigned Taylor Lane.
Yes, we're proposing to realign Taylor Lane opposite Cherry Tree Farm or 35. So, now, Taylor Lane is gonna have the ability as a local road to connect to Route 35 as well.
So, Taylor Lane as its realignment will be serving the same function as Cherry Tree Farm Road on the opposite side of Route 35 by delivering traffic from all those surrounding residential areas to Route 35 on the north, and Taylor Lane will be delivering on the south of Route 35.
No, it's not the same function at all. They couldn't be more different. Cherry Tree Farm Road is a major county secondary arterial that serves commercial zones and a lot larger area than Taylor Lane and Everest.
Well, Taylor Lane as of this day has not yet been constructed, has it?
It exists, yes. It's constructed up to the existing Joe County.
That under realigned?
That realigned, it's not realigned yet, but it exists up to the Joe County.
That's the eastern, or right away, that should be discussed in the sometime. What is the width of that traffic?
I'd have to scale off the survey map, I don't know.
Would you agree with me that the proposed Taylor Lane has a wider carway than existing Taylor Lane?
I know it's widened up the traffic so they can fill the lane. I know it's widened up the traffic so they can fill lanes, but I think it's fairly similar.
All right. Now, in addition to what is in the master plan, are there other publications that describe how to classify the roadway, whether it was a local collector or arterial?
Yes, I'm sure.
Well, you know, you know what? Have you referred to?
No, I haven't. I've just referred to the master plan.
So you're telling us that coming here today, the only document that you referred to in order to determine whether or not a roadway is classified as local collector or arterial is the Middletown Township master plan?
Yes.
Now, there are state bullet papers, is there, or not?
Yes.
There are federal bullet papers, is there, or not?
There are.
You didn't consult those?
I did not.
Now, let me ask you this. Uh, and I, I missed this, I think.
Ron, if you can move that far away, and I can pick you up. If you want to wait, you don't want to be over here, is that right?
I apologize. And I might have missed this when you were testifying. I, I think that you made, you made some studies with regard to existing trip generation or traffic on the existing Taylor Lane, did you not?
I did, yes.
And then I think they also made the same determinations with regard to the proposed traffic on the new Taylor Lane.
Yes.
Now, by my collection, and correct me if I'm wrong, that on new Taylor Lane, you testified earlier in your report, that the amount of traffic on new Taylor Lane will be in excess of fifteen hundred cars a day?
No, I, I recall it doesn't.
Tell me, then, if you have it with you in your report, what you have testified to is to what the projected traffic will be on Taylor Lane?
My, my report could be gallerly analysis, so I have all the gallerly numbers, as you probably know, capacity analysis is always based on gallerly roads, that's, that's the concern in the traffic study, that I should have the township and.
What was it? You're familiar with a publication known as A Policy of Geometric Design of Highways and Streets, which is prepared by the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials?
Yes.
You didn't consult it at this?
No.
Are you familiar with the definitions that are contained within chapter forty-seven of the State Highway Access Management Code? You didn't consult any of them, did you?
I did not.
So, you're familiar with them?
Yeah, look, let me take a step back. I am familiar with the definitions, and I did consult the access code as it relates to the, to the NJDOT access permit.
Are, are you aware of the fact that in those publications, they made the determination partially as to whether or not a road is a local road or a collector road based upon the annual daily traffic upon those roadways?
Yeah, it sounds similar to ours, I guess.
So if, for example, a roadway is, the average daily traffic is greater than a certain amount, then the classification of the roadway can change from local to collector or collector to arterial?
Yes.
And are you aware of the fact that the breaking point between a collector road and a local road is fifteen hundred vehicles per day as an average traffic present upon that road?
Yes, in those publications.
Right.
In those publications, not the ma, master plan I refer to, but in some of those others, yes.
So do you think that these, these publications are wrong?
I didn't say that. I'm just differentiating. Some of them might use a volume number, some of them may classify based on color characteristics.
Would you agree with me that the primary function of a local road is to provide access of the residential property owners or business property owners to get onto a roadway to move both the, either a collector road or an arterial road?
Yes.
Now, would you agree that all of those roadways which are shown within the residential subdivisions themselves surrounding the properties are local roads?
Which roads are you referring to now?
I'm referring now to what I earlier identified as oh five, and I'm just for your benefit, showing where in fact the existing Taylor Lane is, do you recognize that?
I do.
Yeah, in the most sense, in the south, there are a number of individual lots which have cars out in arms, those are local residential houses and subdivision as well. Right?
So, so you're referring to all the neighborhoods that Taylor Lane is connecting with Devonshire Torts, Cherry Tree Lane, all these other streets, Burge, Frye, Givens Court, Thoris Lane, all the streets that serve all the homes?
They are all local roads, right?
Right, including Taylor.
All of those roads are showing up as local roads.
They're all local roads.
Now, all of the roadways are driveouts within the subject project. They also look to be called either local roads or local driveouts, right? In fact, they're not collector roads or arterial roads.
They, they, I, I define all of those as a, as a multi-family access cul-de-sac.
But they would be lower in use, even lower in use to a local road, correct?
Yes.
Okay, fine. But all of those roads which were just referred to, they all feed into Taylor Lane, do they not?
No.
Okay. Well, they feed further south of the Cherry Tree Farm or Cherry Tree Lane, right?
They feed into the Longhills.
All right. Tell me then, and in the space between Cherry Tree Farm Road and the proposed about, proposed Taylor Lane going in a southerly direction, other than when you get to the fork in the road, how many other roadways feed into Route 35?
Well, you have Cherry Tree Lane.
Okay. This is how I want to look at the southern side.
Yeah, the southern side, Cherry Tree Lane. Let me just take a look here. So you have Cherry Tree Lane and my Bullion Lane. It feeds into thirty-five, it says. It doesn't go into the neighborhood, it goes to thirty-five.
So what record?
No, it's just, it feeds in at thirty-five only.
Now, did the witness refer to, in that, what in three, four, five, six?
It was the pages, uh, I have the pages, yes.
What pages in the chapter, the third series, do you have, why do I want to go to the streets?
Uh, the collector roads begins on page twenty-two, and then local streets is on twenty-three.
Now, I'm referring to, okay, to page.
Can you just put the lights on, and, and now?
Let me refer you by name to page twenty-two, and read to you the definition of the collector street in Middletown. It says, "Collective streets provide access between local streets and primary and secondary arterial roads. They provide access to abiding properties and carry traffic from residential neighborhoods to arterial roads. Collective streets which are municipal roadways should have a minimum by the way of sixty feet with one group of traffic lane in each direction. Collective streets which are county roads should contain a right-of-way in accordance with the Montomb County Highway Plan prepared by the county, Montomb County Department." Now, collective streets provide access between local streets and primary and secondary arterial roads. That's a function of the realigned Taylor Lane, is it not?
It's not the primary function.
Okay, but it was not to say, uh, they provide access to abiding properties and carry traffic from residential neighborhoods to arterial roads. That's exactly what the realigned Taylor Lane does, is it not?
Now, Taylor Lane is just a local road that connects into Route 35, has access to single family homes. It doesn't collect the large area of traffic. It's, it is a local road. You know, they specify collector roads right in the master plan, they list them all.
Well, we know that, but we also know, we also know that the master plan cannot, could not possibly list Taylor Lane with the share, because it's a non-existent road, isn't it?
Sure, sure.
How, how would the master plan, you know, when you hear the master plan was drawn?
Uh, I don't.
Okay. If, if Taylor Lane, as is proposed, is not existent, and no one knows whether or not that property will be developed, how can the master plan possibly refer to it as a collector or non-collector road?
I understand that Taylor Lane is the first road that's here. It was the only way to get from this neighborhood to Route 35, Route 40.
You're, you're absolutely right. But tell, answer this for me, then. Are you telling me that you believe that the realigned Taylor Lane is exactly in the same location as the existing Taylor Lane, and the exact width of existing Taylor Lane, and servicing the exact same number of houses and businesses in the way?
No, it just serves the same function.
Okay. Mr. Trump, I know it's a pain with the microphone, but you're going to have to share that in your report, put it in the middle somehow, otherwise I don't think you're going to be able to pick up on your experiences.
Now, uh, you're familiar with, uh, what the master plan did with relation to zoning, are you not?
Yes.
Okay. And the master plan is a document which is prepared by the Department, correct?
Yes.
It's not an ordinance passed by the governing body, is it?
No, but I'm aware.
It's not a professional report prepared by the township engineer?
It has professional input.
Okay, but there's nothing in any document which would state that a reference by a master plan as to what a roadway is or is not is binding on anyone?
That's, that could be your opinion, I, I don't know.
Okay. Would you agree with me that if in fact it is determined or shown that the daily traffic which will be on the new Taylor Lane will exceed one thousand five hundred cars per day, then it will transition from being a local road to a collector road?
No.
You don't agree with that?
No.
Good. You tell me what you think the maximum number of cars on a daily basis a local road has in service?
I, I'd have to, I didn't do a study on that.
I'm sorry?
I don't have an answer for you. I didn't do a study on that.
I'm sorry to hear you.
I, I don't have an answer for you. I didn't do a study on that.
Well, are there documents that establish what the cutoff line is between the various specifications of roadways?
There are other documents, yes. As I said earlier, I didn't refer to the five, because I'm just going based on the master plan, the way it classifies collector roads, knowing those collector roads and how they differ from Taylor Lane. Taylor Lane is not similar to any of the roads listed in the master plan as a collector road. It's not similar to one of them.
Uh, in your, Mr. Trump, would you?
Ron, Ron, I'm sorry.
Board's invitation here. We're looking at those classifications here, Ron. Do we have a copy of them somewhere here?
Uh, not here with us this evening, though. I can certainly furnish the pages of the master plan that are being referred to tonight to the board. You might have copies of the master plan at home, but I didn't furnish them, obviously.
Well, the, the reason we're in effect tasked by Mr. Ganzarowski to figure out what the hell we meant by the master plan as collector roads, arterial roads, et cetera, and he's asking him whether they're, those things are binding, which, I gotta believe they're not. Just my opinion on that. But we're trying to, for instance, when he said none of the roads listed in the master plan, uh, would be the same as, or would be the same as Taylor Lane, new Taylor Lane, I have no point of reference here, because we don't have that list in front of us. Is he talking, for instance, Leedsville Drive, like the road, or Nodge, et cetera, so we're having a.
The master plan lists a number of roads that are arterial roads, collector roads. I know it would be very clear for the board if you had those pages in front of you, so I can make sure I reprint those pages for the board. The master plan defines what it means by local, collector roads.
Yes, it does.
As opposed to our state locations, maybe we have a different definition of the same terms, right?
That's right.
Mr. Trump, the report, I think specifically addresses the definition set forth in the master plan.
Yes?
I should know, but does the ordinance for this project refer to collector roads, arterial roads, local roads, or any distinction within the design standards or zoning standards for this?
The reference, well, the reference to the roadway type is specific to setbacks for buildings along a arterial or a collector road. From my recollection, it's the only direct reference in the RMF zone to collector or arterial roads, and the setbacks are governed by what roads which.
So that if Taylor Lane is a local road, then the setback is?
What is shown by the applicant.
They conform.
They conform.
If the board found, or if, if it was determined that it was an arterial road, the setback would be greater?
The setback requirement would be greater, and it's possible that some of the buildings would be within the setback area as designed.
Is there a difference between collector road and local road, and why?
Uh, between the local road and the collector road setback, yes, there is a difference. There's a heightened setback for a collector road.
I'm sorry?
There is a heightened setback for a collector road.
Collector road.
Yes.
Let me ask Mr. Greenberg, what the setback would be for a unit if in fact this were determined to be a collector road rather than a local road?
I think it's on the, I think it's on, I think it's on the map in the index, and it reflects the fact that if this were a collector road, it would be a setback of fifty. And again, we're going to have collector road as defined in the master plan as opposed to.
Collector road setback would be fifty feet. This ordinance says that any other road, meaning a non-collector road, such as a local road, it would be ten feet. They have it at twenty-five feet, which is more than, let's say, the minimum standard for a local road, but less than the minimum standard for a collector road.
That's correct. I can verify, looking at the ordinance, that the minimum building setback from an arterial collector road. That's correct, I can verify looking at the ordinance, that the minimum building setback from an arterial collector roadway is 50 feet. Minimum building setback from any other public right-of-way is 10.
We don't find the master plan specifically like the break point for what, when something goes local and collector.
What we specify the collector roadways should be described what they are.
How do we decide these roads collector versus local, is it based on? Is it based on traffic volume, is it based on what?
It's based on the board's determination when we adopt the master plan, to give a specific traffic analysis on each road.
The board within the master plan made a determination based on how that road operates, the function of that road, without specific traffic analysis on each road.
That's correct.
Just kind of knowing the area, using your judgment, and saying these are, in our definition, collector roads.
That's right.
Mr. Traubman, let me ask you this question. Is the residential side improvement standard, stands applicable to this project?
Yes.
Are the definitions contained within the residential side improvement standards, the definitions as to what is a local road, what is a collector road, and what is an arterial road, binding upon this board as far as determining what that road is?
I wouldn't say that, I'd say their master plan would need to be considered along.
Your master plan has precedence over the residential side improvement standards.
As would relate to Taylor Lane, yes.
I'm sorry?
As would relate to Taylor Lane, yes.
Now, does the residential side improvement standard have a specific number wherein let's say if the number of trips on a roadway is in excess of 1,500 feet, it would transition from a local roadway to a collector road?
1,500 feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's like, you have the RSI as the front.
I'm sorry? It's 1,500 feet.
Let's make sure, please get a little bit here. The testimony may not be that clear, so, please clear it. We're going about RSI standards powered by, as the master plan, collector road. Those roads over 1,500 trips per day?
Yes. Are you aware of that?
Would that be for, does that be for design standards of that road?
That would be, yes.
Does RSI as relate to setbacks?
No.
Did you design this road to meet RSI as collector road standards or not?
I didn't.
But you didn't.
Look at it that way, I'm just looking at in terms of the town's zoning and the town's definition of locations.
Do you know if it complies with the RSI as collector road design standards?
I don't know.
Another question. Do you know what the RSI as the design standards are for collector road?
I'd have to look it up, yes.
I don't have a problem if Mr. Schmerz wants to recall this witness and go into that, that side. That'd be his truth. Might it?
That'd be Mr. Schmerz's truth.
That's his hope. I agree with the question, I don't believe I have a, okay. Let me just, just one last question. When we look at the site itself, would you agree with me that within the interior design of the drive-halls or driveways, throughout the site, there are a number of dead ends?
I'd say there are some dead ends, basically as Mr. Coco said, there's a looped system.
But there are some dead ends.
Yeah, there are some, all that family access calls that go by.
Now, with regard to Taylor Lane, the roadway width is 30 feet. What is the standard under the RSI as of a width of a local residential street?
I don't know, I don't have it from me, I didn't do an RSI analysis.
Now, if a roadway is 30 feet in width, do you know whether or not there'll be parking permitted on the shoulder sides of the street? I'm using the indirect terminology, but if the roadway here is 30 feet wide, how many lanes of traffic will there be?
There's gonna be two travel lanes on each direction and no parking.
You don't suppose speed limit will be?
About 25 miles an hour.
And now, what does the speed limit in Milltown, if you know, of traffic of local residential streets?
Typically 25.
25.
We have, or you have nothing to state average daily traffic on Taylor Lane?
I don't.
In any of your reports?
I didn't do any of this on record in my reports, I was just referring to your master plan and your zoning.
Okay, because with 245 units, you do an in and an out for those, that's 48. Or, I'm sorry, 490. Then you include in, that's if there's only one car, which is for those units, we go to the new board. But you add that plus the existing neighborhood traffic down below a few millimeters over there. They currently use the existing Taylor Lane, they're gonna use the new Taylor Lane the same way. Jason, my fear is they're going to go over 1,500 pieces. Which will change the classification. Oh, I know, I'm sorry. We may change the classification. I think we need to know those on how the classification arises.
Well, we're looking for a figure on the average daily trips for post-development Taylor Lane. Perhaps it's a way of calculating that based on the traffic report submitted by the applicant, but it's not something that this board has already said to be done.
No, I agree, no, I wouldn't put the order sheet.
But you know, knowing also that you have a collector road in the master plan, that that applies to most half the streets for any roads.
I think the issue though, two sets of definitions. So for RSI as standards, going over 1,500 trips per day means the road gets designed one way. And under 1,500 is a lesser standard, under RSI as for road design. For setback, for those zoning type issues, we're defining what collector road is binding.
Just, just by middle. If it's a collector road, then the setback is X, if it's not a collector road, then the setback is Y.
Yes.
Well, does the RSI as definition, it takes a setback as well?
No. Many of the collector roads identified in the master plan have been identified as collector roads dating back to at least 1993. It should predate the RSI, it must have been at least 10 years.
If the master plan identified a road that only has 500 trips per day as a collector road, it would be a collector road or design standards, or sorry, or setback standards in the ordinance.
Yes, the master plan would dictate and drive that.
And if it had 5,000 trips a day, it would still be, if we named it as a collector road, not an arterial.
That's right.
So, we're defining collector roads by what we sense they are, and we know this. We could be right or wrong in terms of whether or not that corresponds to RSI as standards, but it doesn't really matter, it's two sets of definitions. Two different applications of two different sets of definitions.
What has it effects on the applicant? The master plan is after, if this is a collector road, these setbacks are completely different. And their assumption and their presentation is that it's a local road or is a local road.
What I'm saying though is that it doesn't matter what the traffic. What you have, it matters where we've named it.
Sorry.
The definition in our master plan is more descriptive of what we then describing the list. It's gotta say, the description of why those roads were on that list.
And that says, pass on the date that the last master plan was made, it's not updated.
We may, we've examined the master plan three times at least since 2004, when the master plan was adopted. And we've not made a recommendation on the classification of roadways.
But because we didn't know what was going to actually be put in that area. We, no, but we, we could not. Please, it hasn't been, it hasn't been designed, you know, you can't, I agree with somebody earlier, said we can't guess the name yet. But I think we have to come up with some sense of is this, what is this road? Not what the applicant says it is, what will or would the master plan have said.
Well, this witness is only providing his in absolutes of as to. What, you know, what the master plan says. Has it been since, it's a rough 24 years, and if.
We're still going to be here. We need an idea of how we collectively decided on this kind of way. Better yet, just how we define it, what the care of this, this, those things.
All of us, the. All I can do is, you know, you have the master plan, make sure you have another copy of the section, right? If it would help the board, perhaps we can, now how would the physical or, right, let's see, usually see how they can lay out the township right now. I could help in your analysis of what, right now, they've identified collector roadway in the master plan.
Mr. Chairman, we also have a determination as to, this in fact, the definition of, and the RSI as, it's different than what the master plan is. Which one is binding upon this board?
I think we already have right now. As designed, it's RSI as, as in setbacks and zoning, these are ordinance and measures. I mean, that should not be a source of confusion.
Correct.
That should not be a source of confusion. A design standards RSI as, zoning standards, and setback standards could be governed by our ordinance.
And this specific ordinance, as strong I believe, says that the setback to a collector road is 50 feet.
I'm sorry?
This specific ordinance specifically says that if in fact it's adjacent to a collector road, the setback is 50 feet.
Right, that's what our master plan says.
Correct. So the board at some point, after all the proofs are in, will have to make a determination as to what the, how do you define classified Taylor Lane, and what appropriate setback would be.
And if you, nobody else can help us with that?
I don't think you can, and I know, I know, you say the word appropriate. I think appropriate is somewhat subjective, I think that once you make a determination what the road is.
I would say the correct.
Correct, right.
Anyone else have questions for this witness?
Those are two hours, should we break that?
Right, it's exactly two hours. Okay.
Yeah, so, I would, yeah, before we take this task on, we, Mr. Traubman, ten.
Well, as I said, Mr. Traubman's been course examined by everybody, Mr. Schmerz apparently does no redirect, so, Mr. Traubman is done. He's not coming back for his hat.
All right, we carried to November 6.
Well, you know, I understand that we have to accommodate everyone's reasonable schedule. But the problem is this though, that we had a annual meeting scheduled, published early in the year. By and large, it's the first Wednesday of every month. And that's the regular scheduled meeting before. There's gonna be scheduling issues throughout the rest of the year, through the holiday, the municipal holidays convention.
I only have one more meeting, yeah, I'm about.
But not much, oh, sorry. Well, I mean, I, so, I mean, my representation, it's the regularly scheduled meeting, I mean. I mean, I think.
No one will be here.
Who's gonna pick up? I think that both parties have been very accommodating in terms of scheduling, rescheduling, and everyone has been acting as simply as possible throughout a long period of time. But it's the regularly scheduled meeting of the board. I mean, what would you ask the board to do? If we don't continue with that topic, then we're continuing it through December. There may be conflicts at that line as well. The board doesn't, it's gonna be very hard squeezing in annual meetings absent some extraordinary circumstances. What was the short? Mr. Ganzarowski's indicated he's got personal plans for November 6th, I understand that. But, how are we gonna accommodate everyone's interest here without, and still move things along here?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was gonna say that I have further concern, you know, we're coming toward the end of the year. I don't know what the composition of the board will be next year, I know there's folks going off the board for new members. This is a, this has been a lengthy hearing. There are people on the ninth hearing, something like that. The transcripts are rather luminous, so new members will have to read them. I have an urge and a bulge at the board to consider a way of finishing this up before the end of the year. I know we're running into holiday time, but I think it's entirely the magnitude of this effort on everyone's part, not just the applicants. That we try to wrap this up. And that works toward certainly going forward on the November 6th. I certainly appreciate Mr. Ganzarowski's vacation plans, or perhaps there's someone else in his office who can step in. And then, further, I would ask whether or not the board can see this way clear to schedule a special meeting or other dates where we might be able to wrap this thing up. Because if we go beyond December 31st and get into your reorganization, I don't know where that leaves us, I mean, certainly can be accomplished, but it's going to be a burden on the board. So I'd just like the, this board to take that into consideration.
I just also want to add, maybe because you're confirming that the December meeting already has another rather large application that we carried from tonight to December. So, that's the planning here, so it's happening.
I think it's up to the board, I mean, there's competing interests and. The board's trying to be reasonable as possible, but sometimes. It's usually that way.
There are many good about the board. It's impossible to, there are potential, there are areas of areas of, some of the terms in the board, and they have to read, somebody to read the transcripts. the transcripts with the amazing feat. Uh, so I as well would like to see this to conclusion. That conclusion though is based on how long Gazarovski's going to go on with witnesses. He asked for your witnesses. He hasn't even started his witnesses yet, presented his witnesses. So I'm not sure we can guarantee that this is close to anything here.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, hey. Like they're trying to guess how many cars are gonna be there in the, in this road.
Certainly no guarantees, but just being aware of it and trying to make the effort as best we can to, to wrap it up. And again, I, I appreciate the schedule. I know November has certain events in it, December certainly has certain events in it, but it, it is a rather substantial obligation. And quite frankly, I think this board has an interest in trying to, to wrap it up in, in light of the burden it might put on the thinking board.
Maybe we can already, we have things to go over the board says, we saw the camera tonight.
There was one tonight, that, that was supposed to be, we should, you know, could look at, yeah, three, I'm, I'm gonna cancel or I'll try to reschedule my truck, but, uh, and I don't really, I don't really think, Mr. Schmato sincerely says he appreciates my situation, but having said that, I'll either cancel or I'll really...
Let's, let's be fair about this. I mean, let's be fair about this. If it was a situation that no one could avoid, it was a situation that was, you know, so, unkindly event, if, if it was a, you know, a medical emergency or something, I'm sure Mr. Schmato's position would be different, but when one looks at the schedule and you see where these things are, it's where they are. And do we think that we're gonna get this far? I don't know.
You?
I'm here, I'm here on November 6, so.
You two, you two have a better idea of how long it's gonna take than we did?
You'll, you'll be here for at least two or three more meetings, but I'll be here on November 6.
So it's continued to November 6 without further public notice. Mr. Trappin is, excuse, at this, at the beginning of November 6, so just for all clear, and Mr. Phillips is going to, Mr. Phillips is subject to cross-examination by Mr. Gazarovski. As I recall, my notes, Mr. Phillips was subject to cross-examination by the public. After Mr. Phillips has done cross-examination and questions for the board, whatever they did, then at that point on the injectors will be prepared to move forward with their rebuttal testimony.
Uh, with one thought, I'm not sure what our strategy will be in the discussion with the client. We may wish to put on rebuttal testimony in terms of whether we discuss Gazarovski's, or, or cross-examination.
After, after Mr. Phillips.
Correct. And I, and I don't know if we're going to do that or not, but I don't want to lose procedures.
No, no, but, excuse me, don't do that. Uh, but that rebuttal testimony, if we were following the rules of work, which are not obliged, would go after. You know, it would be, it would be you, him, you?
We can certainly do that.
Right. So that, so that...
I'm, I'm more concerned about the assumption that we have nothing for that could fall and that there may be rebuttal in terms of the sequence of it. I have no problem.
No, but if, if we were doing this in courtroom setting, you'd put on a rebuttal testimony after he was done with his, I, I don't put on a testimony. I don't, I don't care how it goes about. I don't care how he does it. We're just gonna take this matter before the board. I mean, whether he wants to do it, offer a cross-examination, I don't care.
That's one, we can go ahead with Mr. Gazarovski, just wanted to make clear that we, we make additional testimony based on what's that?
November 2.
Okay, that, that's all I can do. So we'll see you on November 6.
November 6, absolutely.